So, over the years, we've had a lot of discussion on this topic of all the countries that are suffering from AIDS in the world. Swaziland is by far the hardest hit, you would know that, in South Africa. A quarter of their adult population and 40% of mothers are infected with this virus. And the life expectancy in Swaziland is now less than 49. Two weeks ago Reuters published a small little article that no one saw and simply said that the tide is turning at last. And a spokesman for Médecins Sans Frontières said, "We are seeing the first signs of reduction in HIV infections." And the reasons why? Because they are getting funding and more efficient treatment, more international help, organised distribution, education, determination, focus. So Swaziland shows that we can meet the challenges that this disease presents wherever we are. So this next session discusses how, and its particular focus is of course on South Africa. And it involves a very great group of people. So I want to introduce all of them to you. And on our panel, Elizabeth Grace Banda is a One Young World delegate, a community coach in Lusaka, Zambia. She was 19 when she used grassroots soccer. You saw them the other night, this very powerful force using football in the fight against HIV/AIDS. So if we could welcome Grace. Elizabeth, sorry, Elizabeth. I beg your pardon, Elizabeth. Okay, and our next panellist was just 24 when he developed a bad case of food poisoning. But because he was ill, he turned it into something really positive. And he has set out to help other people who fall ill. He's known as Tepsa here in Alexandra. He's a member of the grassroots soccer programme. Tebogo Mabocha. Tebogo. Next panellist, Nombu Yiselo Makponguana. Ay! She's an educator, a councillor, an author, a great fighter. So will you welcome Nombu Yiselo? And now we have a very serious panellist, a very grown-up panellist, who is not only a South African Rhodes Scholar, but a constitutional court justice and served on the Supreme Court of Appeal as a judge for eight years. Here's Edwin Cameron. Welcome Justice Cameron. And now a wonderful councillor that we met at the opening ceremony, who was so inspirational with us yesterday, South Africa's own Ashwin Vilimsa. And to chair this very special panel, I want to welcome back somebody who's travelled around the world to support the rights and access to treatment of the 33 million people living with this disease today, CCTV's news anchor, James Chow.
Thank you everybody for being here. This session has been in the works and in the heart for well over a year now. And I think it's so wonderful for One Young World to give us this platform to talk and to share about an issue which is not only so important to South Africa and to Africa, to China, to every single person in this room and outside of this room and everyone watching there on the live stream. I want to start with a bit of an apology on my part. I thought that I was doing introductions and so I didn't communicate to the organisers here that I really didn't want the HIV-positive status of any of our panellists to be disclosed unless they wish to do so. I still think that it's a privilege to hear their stories. I think it's a privilege even for some of these speakers who are so experienced to come out every time to talk about an aspect of their life, the intimacy, which they may not even do with their mother and father back home. So that's my little apology, but I hope we can turn that and go onwards and upwards as to why that's all so important. So many people talk about HIV as a disease or the dying. I am testament as someone who happens to be negative and a journalist and activist to see how it's infected my own life, the spirit of joy, the spirit of hope and the spirit of transformation. That's why it's also a privilege for each one of us to be in South Africa, which is beginning to turn itself around politically, socially, and is leading the way in the fight against HIV and social justice. Kate did all the introductions just now. You breathed a little bit before, and I think Edwin said it was to re-energise you. About 30 years ago, in 1981, five cases of HIV and then AIDS were formally identified for the first time in two cities called New York and San Francisco. And a little over 30 years later, more than 30 million people have died of an AIDS-related illness and more than 30 million people today are living with it. But one of the biggest diseases that can't be solved with a pill or can't be treated by advanced medication is stigma and discrimination. Stigma is such a huge word and even I have to ask people what it means. So I'm going to ask our guest here what it means. Edwin Cameron as one of the most respected judges and someone who literally shaped the human rights landscape here in South Africa. When you think of the word stigma, what does it mean to you?
James, I'm a judge in our country's highest court, but I'm also one of the 6 million South Africans who live with HIV. And for me, stigma represents fear, judgment, condemnation, ostracism, rejection, discrimination. And I feared that terribly when I discovered my HIV status. But after I spoke out about living with HIV, I experienced a world of acceptance and affirmation and love. So I see our task as being to break through the fear of stigma to reaching into people's capacity for love in this epidemic.
Nombu Yiselo, you're a councillor for Anglo-American and yet in a way your story was somehow rooted that way. It's been an amazing journey, an amazing tree. When you think of stigma as well as a woman living in Africa today, what does it tell you?
It tells me that by virtue of being HIV-positive and having been on treatment for 10 years, you'd think that by now it would be easier to just say. But you're still condemned and you call names, you're isolated and it's the saddest thing. And as a woman, dating is a challenge.
Who called you names on the street?
People on the street and people are on the lookout for you and things that you're doing and people want to know who you're dating and they feel like they should be telling people about your status and making them aware or wary of who you are, you know? So it's a bit of a challenge to date. I don't know about the other panellists.
When you say "on the lookout for", that's something very wrong, like you've done something wrong. You need to be aware of that person.
Yeah, you know, James, you could be out there and you could be on a date, going out with someone who may be HIV-negative and people will want to make sure that this person is aware of your HIV status. Meanwhile, they haven't disclosed their own status to them and they don't even know the person's status. And that's the saddest truth, you know? Because that's what I have to deal with, you know? I wish I could go out there and say, "I am HIV-positive and I suppose I'm allowed to date. It doesn't matter who I date, they may be HIV-positive, they may be HIV-negative, but basically I'm allowed to date."
Yes, you are.
I'll give you a call later.
Not on stage, please, not on stage, okay?
If I was privileged enough. Tebogo, you're 32 years old, you're representative of some of the ages inside this room. Tell me about discrimination. Tell me about what you see as a soccer coach.
Yeah. I can say discrimination, I can fit it with like, you know, something that people that judge you with what you are, who you are. And in a way, I'm talking like this, from the experience from my community, where I'm coming from, you know, stigma is one of the things that demolish young people and older people because of, you know, our community expects us to do some things that we are unable to do them. For an example, when I was 24 years of age, I was admitted in hospital with a food poisoning. At the hospital, they did me an HIV testing, then it turns out that I'm HIV-positive. So when I came back to my community, you know, I didn't know what to do and I didn't know who to go to, I didn't know who to speak to. But in a way, I was so brave that I told my family about it. I started taking, you know, initiative about it, you know, going to volunteer in organisations that work with HIV. And people started saying things about me and say, "Why is this young guy working with HIV? Why is this young guy talking to young people about HIV? Is he HIV-positive?" No. The answer was yes, but because they didn't know about my HIV status and I couldn't just disclose to anyone about my HIV status, they didn't know. But I think stigma is one thing that even now is happening. I'm still working in an organisation whereby we work about, you know, HIV, preventing yourself from getting HIV, yes.
Do you mind me asking you? Do people ask you how you came to be infected? Do people ask you that? People you don't know very well?
Yes, they ask me. And for this case, it's a very simple question for me because I've accepted that I'm HIV-positive and I've accepted that I'm living with HIV.
But that's your choice.
That's my choice.
That's his choice. Elizabeth, can I ask you very quickly and then I'll go into a bit of your story? Can I ask you very quickly, why do you think people are so threatened by three letters, HIV? Why cancer? Why TB now, but it wasn't before? Doesn't carry that same dirtiness and disgust that you see in people's eyes, if not in their voices? What's so threatening about it?
To begin with, I think, you know, when we talk about HIV, a lot of people have got wrong information. They have a lot of myths about HIV.
Like what?
Like one, when we're talking about stigma, stigma is simply the judging of a person because of one quality. For example, if somebody is HIV, people think a person is bad or because he or she has HIV because they were involved in prostitution or any promiscuous behaviours. And that's the judging that we're talking about. And then when you talk about why people have this stigma around, it's because of wrong information. And then because people have wrong information, they have fear to be rejected and maybe just fear to say, "If I mingle with somebody who's HIV, they just say, 'No, maybe I would not be considered to be cool'".
Can I push you a bit more on that one? Is it possible that it's not just awareness or misinformation? Is it something also to do with something over here? Something so intimate, sexual intimacy, that somehow people feel so pulled back from that?
Can I say this, James, so it should be like that? In the beginning of my speaking career, I would be standing there and people would want to know how I got HIV. And I would be taken aback and I remember it got to a point where I got fed up and I ended up saying, "You know what? I happened to be working in a retail store and they were sampling this dish and that's where I got HIV." I mean, for crying out loud, HIV is a sexually transmissible infection. Have I got to go out and say, "I had sex yesterday and I woke up with HIV"?
But James, if I may say, I do think that the fact that it's sexually transmitted makes it a difficult issue for people to talk about and it brings to the fore all of our condemnation about too many sexual partners, how did you have sex, who did you have with? I'm a gay man. I'm an openly and proudly gay man and I got it from another man. Thank you. But all of these things are the things that we should be talking about and we should stop condemning other people and then we will break the stigma.
Yep. Ashwin, who all of you know was a springbok and is now an entrepreneur and you see him on television commentating on sport. And then speaking of television, you went on TV to have an HIV test. Did you think about it two, three, four, five times?
Well, you know, I think personally for me, if you see the wonderful people on stage and you see the people living with HIV and what they bring to the world, I didn't feel that I had a need to think about it because I can't really differentiate between me and the judge at all. I mean, if you look at the two of us, he's much way better looking than me.
I'll be the judge of that, please.
And so as a result, but where it stemmed from for me was, you know, I personally, if I look at my life, I found that, you know, I was also being judged in terms of who I was and where I came from. And that in itself, when I ultimately worked on developing myself and becoming successful, it was very difficult, the stigmatisation that went with a youngster coming from the rural parts of Cape Town, living on the Cape flats, being a gangster, being a drug addict, now all of a sudden sitting on TV, sitting alongside panellists who come from high prestige environments. And all of a sudden, there's that stigma that goes with it. If you open your mouth, that, you know, this guy is by virtue of where he comes from, a bit of a retard, you know? And that's the stigma that is out there and that's what one has to challenge. And so as a result, for me, when I went on TV and I really didn't care about what the outcome of the results was, because I can't see myself any different whether I'm positive or negative. I think for me, it's about what it is that you want to bring to the world regardless of your status.
Thank you. Ashwin, you touched on a point here, the plus and the minus sign is separated by one line that goes vertically. What's important about knowing your status?
I for one, I think the importance of knowing about your status is just to understand yourself and live a healthy lifestyle. Not only people go for HIV tests just to find out that HIV-positive, you can go to the HIV test and you find that you are HIV-negative, that will help you to live your life very well because you'll be able to know that I am HIV-negative, this is the way that I must live my life and I must make limits about, you know, risky behaviours, you know, engaging in multiple sexual partners, you know, having more than, you know, older partners for, for an example, I can say, when we're talking to the children at schools. And I think the importance of knowing your status, if you're HIV-positive, it will help you to look after yourself. I mean, I'm from Grassroots Soccer. Grassroots Soccer is an organisation, we are promoting a healthy lifestyle of which I believe that if you know your status, you will live a healthier life.
Okay, so it's not just about knowing your status, but having that knowledge and acting on that knowledge as well. But a few years ago, someone told me this and said, "There is no point of knowing your status or even trying to act on it if there's no universal access to the medication which can treat it."
That was then. Now things are a little bit different. When I started treatment about 10 years ago, there was virtually nothing in the country. And I remember when I read your book about how you struggled and eventually got onto treatment. Very nice book, I must say. I commend you on the wonderful work that you did. It was a challenge to access treatment at that time and had it not been for the company, mining company that I work for facilitating my, the clinical support after the guy had given me about 1,600 US dollars per annum to go towards my treatment. I mean, the money would have been sitting there and doing nothing with no treatment, you know? All I was dying for at that time, or rather living for, was to get an ARV into my mouth. That's all I wanted. I didn't know, I didn't, I didn't care about beetroot, doing this olive oil and garlic and all sorts of things. All I wanted was just one ARV in my mouth, that's all I needed. So universal access is critical.
And just to add on, and just to add on on the importance of knowing your status, I'm saying, there's a saying that goes, "If you're not infected, you are affected." So if you know your status, you know the way to go. And if you educate somebody on knowing their own status and the benefits that comes along knowing their status, I think we can't do more than we are just doing.
One of our panellists here said that you've got to ask this question and I just want you to be honest and no one is going to think any different. But just with a show of hands, how many people here think that HIV affects them in some That's actually less than half. Why does it, why does it affect everybody? Why is it, why are more than half the people in this room maybe not right?
Well, I think on our continent and in our region of the continent, it affects every single one of us. We've all got family members, neighbours, community members, congregational members, colleagues, friends who have either died or been sick with HIV or living with HIV on ARVs now. But I think more deeply, James, it's a good question because HIV challenged our world at the very time when there was an expansion of intellectual property, an expansion of IT knowledge, an expansion of drug access. Suddenly it challenged us with our own fears and prejudices and we had to fight for the drugs that are keeping us alive now, we had to fight for them. I've been on those drugs for 16 years, but it was a struggle led by people like the ones who are with us today.
How much was the drugs?
The drugs were fantastically expensive when I started in 1997 on them. They've come down to a very low price now, but only because of struggle from the Treatment Action Campaign led by young people, people who took to the streets and said, "We can change this." So I think it affects all of us because it's an example of how action by principled committed people can change our world.
If I just may come in there, because, you know, it's very interesting because when I, a few years ago, took an open HIV test and, you know, it's interesting at the time because I think, you know, I come from a household where my mother, grandmother passed away from cancer, my grandfather had cancer and there was a lot of, you know, natural diseases amongst the people, TB, tuberculosis, et cetera. But the HIV issue was this stigmatisation that was put somewhere there and a topic not to be discussed. And what happened last year in fact was my mum's cousin was staying with her at the time and she fell ill. So my mum took her to hospital and as a result, when she came back, she was HIV-positive. My mum was better able to accept it and help her and support her. As a result, my mum became my new all-time hero. And the reason for that is because once she went to the rest of the family, they rejected her and they didn't want her to accept it because they were embarrassed by her HIV status.
How did they reject her?
And they rejected in the sense that they don't even, wouldn't even want to drive in a car with her. They didn't want to sleep in the same room with her. That is how ignorant people are by HIV and AIDS. And I think that is where, how it affects us, is it affects us in our daily lives through ignorance in a big way, I believe. So if we educate ourselves, we'll also be able to not be negatively affected by it, but rather positively impact the impact that we can leave as far as HIV and AIDS is concerned.
I think we need to remember what Bob Geldof said right at the beginning, "Let's return our minds and go back to the roots of One Young World." He said that, "Stop looking at issues as if they're national ones and recognise that they're all global issues." So even though two-thirds of the people living with HIV happen to be living on the African continent, it's something that affects every one of us. HIV is far bigger than just a virus or a public health emergency. It's to do law enforcement, social justice, basic human rights, acceptance even within your own house. It's to do with employment discrimination, sexual violence, and it goes on and on and on. So you just really need to open your mind to all this and look very, very far beyond. Just quickly over there, because you mentioned the word heroes. Edwin is a South African new hero and that's not my word, that's the word of Nelson Mandela who wrote on this book, Witness to AIDS, you can get this book. I tell you that if you read the book and you allow the words to sit inside you, you will go off in a different direction. It's really incredible. And for anyone who's here from China, who speaks Chinese, we have copies in Beijing if you want a translation of that. Thank you, Edwin, for writing this book and for sharing your story with the world. I do want to go back to Elizabeth because we're going to talk about stigma for someone who happens to be HIV-negative. So why should it affect you? Yet you are living in a house where it was very, very present in your aunt. I asked your permission to retell your story, but it came back to you by association.
Yeah, thank you very much. HIV and AIDS has left no corner of the world untouched and that's what I believe in. And HIV is massive on scale and very collusive to society, fatal on its consequences, cruel to children and insulting to human dignity. And then my story started way back when I was living with my auntie since my parents died. I didn't know anything by then, I think I was at the age of 14. And at that age, I was very young that I didn't know anything, I never had access to any youth-friendly corners, I never had anyone to talk to, I never had anyone to consult what the, what wrong was going on within my auntie's sickness. I didn't know what she was suffering from. And then I'm a young person that suffered stigma when I was nursing my aunt for two months and some weeks in a hospital where I was there with, including the doctors and the nurses, that would come to me and tell me, "You should not be eating with your auntie, don't wash her clothes, don't do anything for her." And then you can imagine, I was the only one by her bedside. But what was I to do? I never had information that time. And then I only wished that if I had information, I was going to change it then. But I was so very affected because in my community, everyone was looking at me to say, because I had an auntie who was HIV and maybe it could be because she was promiscuous and stuff like that, then I was also infected. And then this affected my life, even just my living, just my working, just my being with friends. And then I just asked myself, "What can I do to just do away with this stigma that is also affecting me as just an individual that was living with somebody who's HIV in the same house that nursed this person?" It came to my rescue when I met a friend that introduced me to Grassroots Soccer and I thank her for that. I went there and attended the interventions that they're doing in the community and that's when I got the privilege and courage to research more on what HIV was and how somebody can get it and the importance of knowing somebody's status as well as the ways of preventing HIV. It was then that I realised, young people need information. I was only 14, but I never had access to this. Then it came to my rescue to say, "I should be the voice for that voiceless young person out there in the community." And that I got involved in Grassroots Soccer and I started implementing interventions and I'm making a very big change in the communities by making or raising awareness about HIV and reducing the rate of infections among young people. Thank you.
We have our, we have our two soccer coaches with Grassroots Soccer here. Perhaps you can tell everybody very quickly how you're using sports and of course this is the country that's recently hosted the World Cup. How you use the language of sports or whether it's music or whether it's faith to work round the conservatism or the fear to talk and to transport that essential knowledge?
Yeah, I think Grassroots Soccer as an organisation, we have a curricula that we implement at schools with young people. We use sports as a tool to educate young kids about the HIV. For an example, we have an activity that we call Risk Felt whereby we will put three or four cones and on those cones we'll put some messages. The first cone will say maybe multiple sexual partners, sex without condom. The other one can say, you know, eat alcohol, drugs and alcohol. So we make the keys to dribble over those cones. If you touch a cone, it makes, you're going to suffer the consequences. So we attach that message to life whereby how can you avoid the risk of getting HIV in your life? That's how we do it in sports.
Yeah, and we also have another event that we do which is called voluntary counselling testing tournaments where we bring the teams, maybe we say we're going to organise for under 12s or maybe under 13s, then we make them play maybe a serving aside. Then as people come in, as you know that soccer is one of the games that will bring a lot of people at once. Then as we bring those people towards the games, we also set tents that we also encourage people to do VCT, which is voluntary counselling and testing. And then we are reaching out to many of these where you find those people that do not have maybe access to just going to a clinic to have, to have access to HIV testing, they'll come at the ground and have the access just at their doorstep.
Okay. Ashwin, I quickly want to jump over to you because you have a foundation called Green Smile. You work on health issues, including HIV. Because I said to him, "How big is HIV as a portion of that?" And he says, "Well, HIV is a part of everything." And I think it said it at its most beautiful. You're a product of, in some ways, or a symbol of a new South Africa. You became a professional rugby player the day you left school at 18, the day you graduated and that was in the late 1990s. You lived through apartheid and you come You lived through apartheid and you come out of it. So we had to put AIDS in context with a social transformation here. You've seen life before and after Mr Mandela. So what do you say then in parallel for that journey of before and after in terms of the national response to AIDS?
Now, I, I think if you look in terms of the number of white people that was part of the entire apartheid movement, I think that just shows you how the minority also can contribute to the bigger cause that we are facing. Because when you are HIV negative and that's the majority, it means that if you can speak out and you can help those who's HIV positive, as a result, you find that overall, all of us will just be much better off. And I think personally, if you find, everything that we are focusing on, so we focus on three things primarily, sports, health and education. All three of those things are directly related to your health. And what is the issue around HIV and AIDS? It's a health issue. So it's a lifestyle issue and it's how you conduct yourself and it's how you educate yourself, it's how you treat others that is living with the HIV and, and all of those things. So for us, it's important to ensure that through everything we teach is to also teach the fact that we have to accept each other regardless of what the stigma is that is put on us, but rather accept each other for our human capabilities more than anything else.
All of your leaders here in South Africa, Edwin has an incredible opportunity to shape the choices that this country makes. Do you think that the fight for basic human rights in South Africa drove the progress on AIDS or was it the other way around?
I think we had to fight for human rights within AIDS and I think that the way we dealt with the AIDS epidemic, which was very halting, many steps backward before we got to our present state, which is a, a very good national AIDS policy with 2.2 million people like N'Gombe Yiseli and me on, on, on ARV treatment, took a long time, but it shows that our democracy is still a work of art that's in the, in the making.
We're gonna start wrapping things up over here. What's beautiful about One Young World is, it's not just talk, it's not just ideas, though ideas are so critical, it's taking and lifting that to the next level. Let's try and find some solutions in the next one minute and 38 seconds. It's possible. If there isn't soccer, if there isn't a grassroots soccer in the communities that are more than 1,000 delegates are going home to, how can they make progress on HIV and help their community?
Apart from just using the power of soccer, like in my country, sometimes we use, sometimes you could organize an event and then maybe you invite one of those tasks, then they perform. As you also set tents and then disseminate the information like we put, as a peer educator, I can't be going around now informing people, like when I gather, I gather maybe a group of young people, then I start disseminating information in a way that it is so interactive, where we just do an activity, then convey a message. So it's one of the opportunities that we've taken. Apart from that, we do maybe poetry where you just, maybe you organize some people because we believe in mobilizing, inspiring as well as educating, yeah.
As someone who's living with HIV today and living healthily with HIV, what do you want every single person in this hall to think about and to remember when they leave those doors?
As a person who's living with HIV, I'm not making my HIV status my issue. So I would like to say to everyone who's in this room, you know, health is all, is our life. So think about your health each and every day because you are living each and every day. That's what I'll say.
I think it's also very important, a lot of my friends and family who are living with, because my friends are my family, who are living with HIV always say that we're not asking for special treatments, we're just asking for equal treatment. Ashwin, I, I want to ask you finally as a, as a sports figure here, someone who has incredible outreach and commands a lot of respect to your story of hope and progress, but also to your story of achievement. What's the biggest thing that you have learned so far? And it doesn't necessarily have to do with HIV.
I think for me, the biggest lesson in life that I've learned apart from everything else is, you know, the two very important things is in order to love and support those you love. And that is basically it because for me, that was what changed my life around.
Edwin, I'm not going to give you the warm and fuzzy question, I'm going to ask you that as Justice Cameron of the Constitutional Court of the Republic of South Africa, are you doing everything that you can do?
No, none of us is doing enough. We need less stigma, more prevention, more testing and more treatment and none of us is doing enough to get that.
And my very, very last question is to you, ma'am. I want to remind everybody that when your story was told in a newspaper and a reporter picked it up and someone from Anglo American in the United States heard about it and was looking for someone to sponsor, they contacted the reporter and then they contacted you. At that time, ART was 4,000 rand a month. And I said, how much of that was of your salary? And she said, my salary? Forget it. I was on allowance at that time.
650 at that time.
At 4,000?
Yes, that was about 10 years ago and I was supposed to buy the medicines myself and the one bottle, I will never forget to the digits, CombiVere, which is a combination of two drugs and one is essentially supposed to be on three drugs, that's highly active antiretroviral therapy. And I was put on two, which is 1,370. And to this day, I'm amazed how I survived, you know? And I'd like to say in closing that partnerships are in place, we should strengthen the partnerships that we have, civil society, government, business, NGOs, sports, you as the affected people and us as the infected people, let's work together and then we'll bring the level of stigma down.
And I really think that they really, I think everybody should stand up for our guests.
Well done, beautiful.
Great job.
Well done, you.
Awesome job as usual.
Thank you.
That was fantastic.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Well done.